Let's call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. I would ask, is anyone else recording this meeting? If you'd please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any citizens comments? No? Okay. We were really hoping for one. Any special recognition?
We do, but with your permission, the young woman we want to recognize actually is coming from, I think, work.
Yes.
So she won't be until about 7:15, so with your approval, we'll skip that and come back to her when she arrives.
Absolutely.
It's great news.
Any objections to that?
No.
That's good. We now move on to the student representatives' report. Should we officially welcome them?
I think we should. I did meet with them last week and welcomed them. So we have Taylor Folkrod and John Champagne. And I asked them to maybe just start off by telling just a little bit about themselves, to introduce themselves to the committee, and then they have a report to share.
Great idea.
Ladies first.
You guys already heard, I'm Taylor Folkrod. Hi, guys.
Hi.
I'm a senior at Auburn High. I play field hockey. I am part of the marching band at Auburn High. I'm also part of their concert band and really excited to be here.
I'm John Champagne. I play golf and tennis for the school. And I'm also involved in a few different clubs, like Ski Club, the math team, some of those clubs. And I'm also a senior this year.
Excellent. Welcome. Does anyone have any questions of our new guests?
No, we're looking forward to it.
Not yet. No? Welcome aboard. Now do you have a report for us?
Okay, so the school year is, it's just started a couple of weeks ago, but it's going pretty well, I'd say. One thing, I feel like all the freshmen are adjusting well to the new school. I was part of, we were part of the link crew that like, the first day back, we like show them around and do all that. And I think they're doing pretty well. As we can tell, we can spot them easily. They have their iPads, so it's not hard to tell who the freshmen are. And then next week, we have, we're hoping we'll have a welcome back assembly in the gymnasium for just like the school year kicked off again.
While they're permitting, we're hoping to have it outside. The marching band might be performing during our welcome back assembly. Speaking of marching band, we had our first game last week. Went pretty well. We have a lot of new underclassmen, like eighth graders, that were pulled up to be part of the marching band, which is a huge asset to our group. They're all fantastic. We are going to the Big E tomorrow to do a performance. And hopefully, with, during the superintendent's report, you guys will approve it. We'll be at Putnam, Connecticut on Saturday to compete. This will be our first competition as like a real marching band, so it'll be really fun. Sports wise, all of our teams are doing really well. Field hockey won five to nothing today. Boys had a game, but it was still going on when we left, so.
Yep, the golf team is four and three right now, and our football team is two and oh, as of this week.
Excellent.
That's great.
Sounds like we're off to a good start. Very good. Thank you and welcome aboard. Okay, I would seek approval of the minutes for the September 3rd meeting. I entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have to abstain. I wasn't here for that meeting.
We now move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, Taylor indicated this, and actually, because the Rocket Band is relatively new and this competition is recent, typically approvals for out-of-state field trips come months in advance. But this one is a unique opportunity. It's going to take place on Saturday. So I'd like to turn it over to Ginny Bailey, who is here tonight. She is one of our music teachers, and she runs the Rocket Band and the marching band. So if you want to get up and just give a little overview of the field trip, and then seek the committee's approval.
Sure. May I stay here or do I have to first?
Oh, no. Nice try.
Sorry.
And you have to sing the whole thing.
Yeah.
Too much, so.
I'll forget that then.
As Dr. Brunel indicated, the marching band is going competitive this year. It's one more way for us to join the rich legacy of sports teams at Auburn High School. We're one of the few schools in the state that is actually growing a marching band, where a lot of schools are losing their marching bands. Marching bands are very expensive. They're a very time-consuming activity. But we're in the unique position to be able to actually be fielding a marching band and hopefully competing. We're trying out two different competition circuits this year. One is the US Band Circuit, which is really popular in the South, and it's slowly making its way up to New England. It's been predominantly New Jersey, South Texas. It's a real big circuit there. So the competition circuit has a lot of the big bands that have two, three, 400 members. But up here, we have, we have smaller bands with smaller schools. It's run by the cadets from the DCI Drum Corps International. It was actually recommended to me by our percussion instructor, Mr. Ray Dandurand. He's been competing on this circuit. He says it's a very educationally supportive circuit. The kids will receive real honest feedback and will have a better idea of what to look forward to and how to grow throughout the season. We're also looking at the MICA Circuit, which is a circuit that I competed in when I was in high school. And that will be at Shepherd Hill, so it's a more local competition. So we're hoping to try two, maybe three competitions a year, not to overwhelm the students. We have students like Taylor who are involved in the athletic program. She's taking several AP classes. So we want to make sure they can still keep up with their studies, but also have some real band-friendly experiences. So this is at Putnam High School. It's one of the closest competitions to Auburn, just over the border, which is why I selected that particular one. There was a Massachusetts-based competition, but it was down on the Cape, and the weekend was going to conflict with some of our bigs. I believe it was going to conflict with homecoming. So I actually did ask back in May whether or not I needed to have this approved as an out-of-state field trip. It's weird because we are sort of a sport, but not really recognized as a sport. So we're still kind of testing the waters and trying to figure out where we belong in this particular program. So we're asking for your permission to attend the US Bands Competition in Putnam, Connecticut this Saturday.
All set. Any questions or comments?
I have a question. It sounds wonderful, Virginia. I'm just wondering, what do they judge the bands on? Is it the marching, and you have to come up with these fancy maneuvers, or is it basically the music, or?
Everything.
Everything.
Everything. Everything from the field show design, so all of the different formations that the students have been working on. We had our band camp first week of August. We had to fire our drill writer for not coming through with our drill during band camp, so we hired a new drill. So they'll be judged on their drill, their execution of the drill, their ability to march it properly, everybody on the same foot, everybody keeping their upper body to the box. They'll also be adjudicated on their musicianship, and they'll be adjudicated on the color guard routines. They'll be adjudicated on their spirit and enthusiasm, so pretty much everything. They'll receive comments from judges. They'll have clinics. And they'll get the opportunity to see some of these top bands perform. There are 11 bands slated to compete in this particular competition.
Sounds wonderful.
I mean, how do we turn this into a sport? Because it sounds like just as much practice as, you know, any other.
Some schools, it is a varsity sport, so it's just a matter of petitioning and, you know, getting the athletic department to bring us under their umbrella. But it is a very physical activity, as Taylor can attest. Students run laps, they do push-ups. They have to be able to play their instrument while running backwards. So it takes a certain amount of skill to avoid collisions on the field.
Any other questions or comments? I would just say we appreciate what you're doing, and this is very exciting, I'm sure to everyone in the community. There's nothing like a marching band, especially at a football game. It really, it really makes it a little more festive. Any college games that you watch, they've always got the big marching bands. It's just a big part of it, so we're pretty excited about this. Paige?
I would like to just add to it, not just the schools, but you've done marching bands for the veterans stuff too in town. Appreciate that too.
Thank you.
You do a great job at what you do, and you, I've seen it many, many times, and it's just outstanding what you do.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve it, field trip to Connecticut.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Definitely. And if I can just add to, Mrs. Bailey, this was really the dream of Mr. Pietrillo, Mrs. Bailey, Mrs. Forbes is involved, Mr. Meyer, Mr. Dandurand, and anyone that I've missed. It's a tremendous amount of work, and kudos to the students. So they do a fabulous job, so I look forward to hearing some great, great news.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Good luck.
Special recognitions, yeah.
We now go back to special recognitions.
So I'd like to recognize, Connie, if you could actually go up to the podium if you would. So just wrote out a brief, so congratulations to Connie Chung, who is an Armond High School senior. She has been accepted into the National Association for Music Education's All-National Ensemble. She was recommended to audition for this festival based on her scores at the district and all-state festivals, with students from all 50 states auditioning for spots in the concert band, orchestra, jazz band, and choir. Her selection into this All-National Honor Ensemble highlights her premier ability and recognizes her as one of the best musicians in the country. Connie is one of only seven students who will represent Massachusetts at the concert in the historic Grand Old Opry House in Nashville on October 29th. So congratulations to Connie.
Excellent.
Thank you.
And I would offer to, congratulations to Mrs. Bailey and all of her music instructors over the year. Connie is truly a tremendous musician. I've had the opportunity to see her. But we wanted to recognize you publicly for this great, great honor. Well deserved.
Well, thank you, Ms. Brunel.
Is there anything that you'd like to share with us?
I'm a junior, not a senior.
Even better, we have you for two years.
That's great.
That is all.
Are you hoping to have a music career someday, or is this just?
I don't know.
You don't know?
I just spent a lot of time doing it, and yeah.
You still got time to figure it out.
Yeah.
Well, you could always be a sixth grade teacher if you want. I had her do.
That's great. Congratulations.
Any other questions or comments?
No, that's great.
Congratulations.
That's awesome.
Very proud of you.
Well, thank you.
That's good.
Great job. Thank you.
Great. You're all set. Yeah, you can say it. You can stay or leave. Well, you should be the one to tell her.
She's going to run for it.
No, no, no.
Okay, bye Ginny.
Sure.
We have a step.
You guys are welcome to leave. There's nothing, excuse me.
Yeah.
They don't.
Yeah. Yeah. Enjoy your evening.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
We're not throwing you out, just saying it's going to be boring. We now move on to the superintendent's report.
So a couple of, thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of really positive things to share with you on top of what already has been. Margaret Collins and Ian Elsae, they share the responsibilities, the head nurse. And they recently informed we have a new program that they took advantage of, the second time actually this school year, in terms of EpiPens being donated. What it has saved us in this program over the two years will be approximately $8,000. So included in this packet is a memo of thank you from Mrs. Collins to the organization, the Bio Ridge Pharma Organization, to thank them for this. And I just wanted to make you aware of it, and also to ask that we accept this donation with gratitude.
I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve the donation of four free EpiPens for each of the six Auburn public schools at an overall savings of $4,000 for this school year.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I really thank the nurses for reaching out to find this source. It's a great way to save money and to be sure that our students are safe in our schools, obviously, too. The next item is the press box. And what we included in here for you, as you know, this has been completed with true collaboration between Bay Path, the school department, the town, as well as the local cable commission, who was greatly generous in making donations toward this. But we have had some potential inquiries around renting this. Now, one unique opportunity that we have, we have some sound system as well as scoreboard equipment in there. Obviously, it would be rented by somebody who was going to be using one of the fields, so it would coincide with that. Through our TV production program, Mr. Bergman is the teacher in that. He actually trains students, and they have opportunities to do almost like an internship in there. So even though we are setting these fees that I have noted here and recommended, there is the potential, and I would offer for the Auburn nonprofit groups, whether it's our athletic teams. These would be non-school teams, but town teams that are run, if they wanted to use it. They would have the ability to utilize a student who may be willing to volunteer his or her time to do it, or certainly at a reduced rate. But in keeping with the school committee practice, I thought it made sense to come up with a fee that seemed reasonable. And that way, if we have any inquiries, we have an answer for them.
I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve the fee schedule for use of the press box.
Do I have a second? Any questions or concerns? Mr. Page?
The only thing I have is charging nonprofits. I have a real hard time with doing that, and especially when they're people from Auburn. You know, they pay for these schools and the fields. They pay for everything. And it just seems like we keep making them pay more and more, and, you know, the nonprofit, they're not there to make money. They're there to just run the program, and for that, I can't agree to this because of the nonprofit status. The rest of it I agree with, but the nonprofit, I don't.
Do we have many nonprofits that use the facilities?
We don't at all currently have any that do. This is just in anticipation. It was really just in keeping with the fee schedule that's been established for probably, well, it started before us, so I'm going to guess maybe in 2006 or so, in terms of use. We do have some groups, I'm trying to think of nonprofits who would rent. They have used, for example, our kitchen, and we do charge them, and they have to have a cafeteria worker there. Generally, that's to raise money for things. And then the other ones are really more for-profit, Auburn organizations, but for-profit, and they are charged their fee, as set in here. And also the sound system in the auditorium, they would, they would be charged for as well.
I would just say, I appreciate and understand your position. It's just, I think my take on it is that, yes, they paid for it upfront, but there is going to be some maintenance involved, some wear and tear. And I think it's just a way, way for us to kind of keep a little bit of money aside to fix the equipment should something happen or should something have to be replaced, and we don't have to put it into, into the budget or make it a budget line item, because we'll have that money to repair what has been paid for. And I think in some cases, you know, maybe the taxpayers may appreciate the fact that, that we are going to maintain it well, and we are going to keep a little fund aside to take care of that. That's just my take, but I definitely understand where you're coming from.
And I think with thousands of nonprofits out there, it kind of opens the door to just always, you know, if it's free, then people will be lining up, I feel like. And again, it would be a lot of wear and tear on the equipment.
Well, I'm just going on the Auburn nonprofit.
Yeah.
Status only.
Oh, yeah.
Not, not anything else. And I still stick to my convention that I don't agree with it, paying, making nonprofits pay. And I won't agree to it.
I definitely understand your position.
Okay.
Are there any other comments?
I, I just noticed the parking lot charge. So if they use the auditorium, they have to pay to use the parking lot too?
No, that's actually if somebody was renting the parking lot on its own.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's, if they rent the auditorium, they get the parking lot.
Oh, okay. We throw it in, huh?
Yes, no.
So if they come in on a helicopter, yeah.
I figured this was one of those gotchas.
No, definitely not.
Any other questions?
That's what I feel like with a nonprofit, gotcha.
Gotcha.
I would entertain a motion to approve the fee schedule.
We've got it.
Oh, we've got it?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, that was, and we had a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 No.
The next item annually, the, and this will actually be the 20th year, the Auburn Chamber of Commerce is sponsoring its golf tournament. It'll take place on Monday, the 22nd. And in total, they have donated $230,000 back to the Auburn community for this event. So as I have done each year, I will go to Heritage Country Club to thank the golfers, the golf committee, and the chamber in general, in person, just to thank them. They really do a great job for us, which is wonderful. Sadly, wanted to make you aware that the Auburn Rotary Club is disbanding. You may have read about this. They were actually down to only five members. But I do want to recognize the Auburn Rotary Club. They were tremendously supportive, just as the chamber is, to the students in the school district for a number of years. They held the annual pancake breakfast. They gave scholarship money away, and were just a general support to the community. So I would be happy if you were so inclined to have me write a letter to who was the president at the time, Mr. Owen Russell, and to thank him. I have been in touch with him personally, but I didn't know if the school committee had any interest in sending something more formally.
Sounds like a great idea.
I think so.
Yes.
And their breakfast will be best.
We need that in the final motion.
Yeah, that would be great, and I'll draft it and bring it to the next meeting to decide, yeah.
I would entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to the Auburn Rotary Club to disband and saying, thank you for all what they've done for the school district.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then finally, the class size update, as promised, we did continue to monitor it. And with your approval, at last meeting, we have hired an instructional assistant for both PAC and Mary D. to reduce those class sizes primarily during literacy and math. So the principals are pleased and look forward to getting these individuals scheduled, so thank you for that.
We now move on to unfinished business.
So the Fall Special Town Meeting, we made you aware, will take place on October 21st. And there are actually copies of several different warrant articles that I'd like to just walk you through and happy to answer, Mr. Barber, I, any questions that you may have. So if we stay with the one first that should be on the front, it has only Articles 1 and 2 listed on it. It may be at the front of your seats perhaps. I think it's written up in it, yes. So these two articles are ones that, I should say, the first article is one that has come forward in the past. And this really is seeking reimbursement of payment that the town received. It goes into the general fund. Mr. Barber will speak a little bit about this during his report. In reimbursement for transporting students who become homeless during the school year, whether they started in our district and because of family circumstances are moved to another district, they have the right to stay in our district, and we share equally in the cost of transporting them back. Or if they were in another district and were moved to Auburn to a shelter somewhere, of which I don't believe there are any currently, but we have had hotels in the past, we would then be responsible to share the cost 50/50 to send the child back to his or home district. And the reason behind this is really to provide for continuity of service for students and not have them be negatively impacted, any more negatively impacted because of the circumstances that are quite honestly beyond their control in terms of their family. So that one there actually is a relatively small amount. What you'll see next year will be nearly $12,000. So it really depends on what we had the year prior in terms of homeless students. The second one noted there is to seek from the general fund revenue. And this would be a one-time payment that we would look for. It's not going to add to our bottom line in the budget. As you know, as part of all of our transitions, we're doing the six, seven, and eight will go to the new middle school, grades three to five, to the current middle school. But we'll also be moving Mary D. students to Patachak. And because of that, the playground that is there, the equipment obviously is bigger and taller because it's for students in grades three to five. So this amount of money would allow us to have the equipment lowered, which it would need to be, and also to add an area of swings. Now, it's my understanding that there are PTO, or PTOs may be interested in doing some fundraising to support this because this won't take the entire value, won't take care of the whole thing, but it would get us well on our way. I did mention this to Mr. Kazanovich and let him know about this. I think it's a reasonable amount to request, and I think it's for a very important cause for children to have some play area that's appropriate for them. So I don't know if you want to vote on those first or take them as a group. That's certainly up to you.
Would this allow the children down at Patachak to have the same type of playground that the students at Bryn Mawr probably already have?
It would be very similar, yeah. Yes, it would be very similar. Exactly. Yep.
Now it wouldn't be fair.
Right. Right. Yep.
I think we could take them as a group if there's no objections.
Okay.
I haven't heard any objections so far.
Okay. So the next page in your packet, or the backside perhaps of that first page, these are, if you'll remember, this is all part of the MSBA's Accelerated Repair Program that we were fortunate enough to be invited to participate in. And as provided at the last meeting, we've submitted all of the prerequisites to them. So now we're waiting for MSBA to tell us who the individuals, the consultants, will be working with us to actually fine-tune the costs. But as we've talked before, this has the potential, if we replace the boiler, partial boiler replacement at the middle school and roof replacement, plus a roof replacement at Bryn Mawr School, MSBA will participate in approximately 50% of the cost. So that has the potential to save the town between $600,000 to $1 million for these three projects. So by doing that, and there's a span in there because we don't know the exact cost to do each one, so that's why there's a span, but these are based on our best estimates. So what we did, and you've seen the letter previously that we sent to Mr. McCarthy from MSBA, we need to re-appropriate CIP money that has been previously approved by the town. And what we've done is indicated that we would be looking to group this money into a new account titled, just as we did for 10 Swanson Road, we did that last spring, for the 10 Swanson Road account. This would be the MSBA Accelerated Repair Program account. So it is my recommendation, our recommendation. I thank Mr. Barber and Mr. Fahey for their diligence, and Mrs. Morin for really looking over this with a fine-tooth comb. It is my recommendation that you approve these as well. So those are the ones that would be supported, or sponsored, I should say, by the Auburn School Committee solely. And then I'll, I'll explain the one regarding jointly with the NS, with the SBC next.
I would entertain a motion to approve each of the articles.
I think you could do, so it would be for the seven articles sponsored by the Auburn School Committee as presented.
Okay. I would entertain that motion.
I will make that motion to approve Articles 1 through 7.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you very much for your support on that. The next article is, this was actually voted last night by the School Building Committee. And this article, they will be sponsoring it, but as has happened in the past, it is connected, directly connected to the Auburn Middle School project. So in the past, on such articles, the school committee has jointly sponsored it with the School Building Committee. As you know, they'll be adding a sidewalk out front here on West Street, as well as expanding West Street. So there'll be a left-turning lane into the school project. And then also, they're doing an expansion of the Route 12 intersection. They won't actually go onto 12, but expanding so that will be, to really allow for better flow of traffic and turning lanes and such. That will require some potential land takings or easements, either temporary or permanent. As explained through this process, for the neighbors along this street here, there are actually 14 different parcels. They range as small as 60 square feet, and those would be temporary easements where they may need to actually enter the driveway during the process that they're doing the work. And they would make repairs to it, so it was back to its original state. But also up here, more predominantly, as we head this way, there is a Perros Auto, a very small section there from them. And then it's actually the Mass DOT and Mass Electric that owns parcels up there. So what this article allows for, what would seek from town meeting, would be approval to actually repurpose the money. Town meeting's already approved, the $44.5 million. It would allow us to, with town meeting approval, to use those funds to purchase any land that was required here. And then also, in this article, as you'll see the part that's in italics there where it says, "Method of providing property descriptions needs to be discussed." So this has also been reviewed by bond counsel. When it actually goes on to the warrant. When it actually goes on to the warrant, as approved by SBC, it will list out each of the parcels. It will list their deed, the map number, and page and all of that. But it is my recommendation that you approve this. And again, it was a unanimously supported article last night by SBC.
I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve the new article.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
Any discussion on this matter? Mr. Page?
Not on a specific one, but we had that second article last night that we voted on. Has that been cleared up? Or is that?
Correct. It will not be needed because this article actually will take care of it. So to explain for those who weren't at SBC, there was a question whether this article would grant the approval needed to repurpose the $44.5 million, to use whatever sum of money it would be to do the land takings. And we did check with Bond Council and the attorney today, and this one will suffice.
Okay, so just to do one and we're all set?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
I have a question.
Sure.
Has there been any discussion with the landowners as far as?
They have all been made aware. We actually are holding a public hearing for all of them on Tuesday at 6:30 here. VHB is the engineer on the project. They'll do a presentation. Letters were sent to all of the abutters in the area for them to come. And through Skanska, they've reached out to them. And we've also, SBC approved last night to hire an appraiser to come in. So it's a very formal process that will appraise the land and come up with a value. And then the next step after Town Meeting approves would be to negotiate that purchase, whether it's a temporary purchase or whether it's a permanent land taking.
Have all the discussions been positive or?
I think that for the most part, as Mr. Needle reports, that they have been. In fact, a couple of the homeowners signed off on right-of-entries right away to say, "Sure, you can use my driveway, you know, no problem and things." But we're going to still go through the process of getting the appraisals for all so that everyone's treated fairly. But I think there seems to be confidence that this will be done friendly, in a friendly way, and not have to be, require any hostile takings. And that sounds so negative, but I think they'll all be friendly. Yeah, yeah.
Excellent.
As though.
Any other questions?
Who's the work done by? Is it the Auburn Highway Department that's going to be?
No, we'll actually be hiring. So VHB is the engineering company that will do it. It will all get put out to bid, just as with this project here. So Skanska, who is the owner's project manager, they're overseeing this as well. But it will get put out to bid as with all of the procurement laws, yeah. But I will say that the DPW is very involved in overseeing all of this. And this was actually a requirement by, set by the planning board for the approval of the middle school. So it's in compliance with that, too.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Also at your seat is an updated copy of the goals that I had presented at last meeting. And I want to point out to you, under District Improvement Goals, unintentionally, but I appreciate this being brought to my attention, that along with overseeing the smooth transition of the middle school students to the new school, JB and PAC to Tens Swanson Road, also be overseeing the smooth transition of Mary D. into Patta Chalk. And in fact, later this month, I'll be going to meet with the Mary D. staff, just as we've been doing with the JB and PAC staff, to answer their questions and hear their feedback or any concerns that they may have, too. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have on this.
Any questions?
I had a question, actually. When you mentioned the expanding of the preschool program, is that in our budget? Or would it kind of pay for itself through tuition and?
So that's something that came directly out of the strategic plan, to really look at, can we expand preschool? The Chapter Seventy formula is, has made an adjustment in it, that if we provide free full-day kindergarten, free preschool, free preschool for students, that they will reimburse us for that. So we have the potential to get more Chapter Seventy money. That comes a year after we do anything. So we're really just in the study phase of it. Should we find that it may be cost-effective to us, I think we're all convinced it makes good sense for students. But if we believe it would be cost-effective, you may see it come forward in the budget process. Yeah, so it wouldn't be until next year. But we're still very much in the study phase on this.
Would we have space in our buildings for this?
That's the other thing that we are looking at, is in terms of, you know, and with the shifting of the schools.
Yeah.
And it could be something, you know, we've done some preliminary discussions around this. So it could be something that we say, although it may not happen in the fall of '15 with all of the other things we have happening, if we agree this makes sense, I'd come forward to you with a timeline that said, "Let's make a commitment that the fall of '16 that we might be able to do and expand things." I think that there may be some opportunities for us in terms of space, potentially, once the moves are made, yeah.
And this would be for free preschool?
Yes.
That's amazing, actually.
Correct, correct.
I'm paying for preschool right now.
Right, right. There's really a, no, there's a strong push to really, I mean, the research is so clear that the early we can get all children in school, but particularly those who may have any challenges in particular, the sooner that we can get to them and help to remediate, the better off they are throughout their schooling. So I think it's an exciting opportunity, and I think it's a, just a perfect next step after we added full-day kindergarten, sort of really start, you know, looking at this. So we'll continue to study it, and whether it comes through in this budget cycle, I think you can guarantee it'll be in next year's, if not.
Any other comments, questions? I would entertain a motion to approve the superintendent's staff goals.
I'll make the motion to approve the superintendent's goals.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Did anyone change their mind about further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and I will provide you a mid-year update on those. I did actually share with you earlier that all of the prerequisites for the accelerated repair have been completed. Mr. Sullivan, he's our liaison with MSBA, confirmed that. So now we're just in a holding pattern, waiting to hear. But I think this is a tremendous opportunity for certainly the schools, but the town, too, to save some substantial monies. The guidance regarding school building closings, to make you aware, we do continue to work on putting together this package and anticipate that it will be ready by certainly the second meeting in October. Because MSBA has not participated in the funding of either JB or Mary D., those buildings are both almost ninety years old. We still need to go through the process, so it's really more official filing that we need to do. But just to keep you apprised that we are working on that. Master Plan Team, we met last night, and hopefully everyone has seen the new expanded parking lot at the current middle school, Tens Swanson Road. It has taken all of the vehicles off of Swanson Road at drop-off and pickup in the afternoon, which is great. It's running, as Mr. Fahy reported last night, seamlessly, and that's what the principal and assistant principal are saying. So it really is great. You approved the awarding of the contract note, architects, at the last meeting. We outlined the timeline. We should have, packages will go out to bid in January for the expansion of the kitchen, teachers' rooms, student bathrooms in the lower level, as well as the upper main-level office area. So we'll keep you apprised. We're actually not going to meet again until late November. I think it's November 18th, because we're in a bit of a holding pattern right now until the paperwork catches up. But great things happening. And again, support and thank the Town Meeting for allowing the repurposing of CIP articles, because that's what's funding this work, at no additional taxpayer expense.
That's awesome.
School Building Committee, I did share a bit of a report from last night. And also in addition to that, Mr. Moore from Labor Pagano had a big color board that listed all of the different colors, the tiles that we've selected. We're continuing to look at desks and chairs. We'll meet again in a couple of weeks to go over the telephone system, technology. So it's a very exciting time. This is the fun stuff, I would say, picking out that. And everyone seemed to be pleased with the color selections, do you think?
Very, yes.
Yeah, really had a nice, nice theme to it. And as Mr. Gagnon said, we bleed blue in Auburn, so there was a heavy blue theme to it. Very traditional, I would say, very traditional theme, but it really looks nice. Looks nice. And last on this is the budgeting priorities. If you have any additional ones, obviously, student achievement, I know, is always our mutual priority, so you will see a heavy emphasis on that, as well as the strategic plan, too.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I mean, one of my personal priorities is seeing the PAC school updated and ready for the incoming kindergarteners.
Yep.
So that would be one of my focuses, I think.
Okay.
Any other comments? We now move on to new business.
The Civil Rights Coordinator, Dr. Louzey, has served in this capacity in the past, and it is my recommendation. So this is really, if any staff or parents or even students want to register a complaint, they go through her. She puts together the information, and then it comes to me for resolution and review. So it is my recommendation that we appoint her in this capacity.
I would entertain a motion.
Let's make a motion to appoint Dr. Louzey as a Civil Rights Coordinator for the Auburn Public Schools.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. She will be thrilled.
Another title.
Noted in upcoming events, we have, as Taylor and John really said, I mean, it's the start of the school year, but things are very much in high gear. So things are running really well.
You should mention your race.
Oh, yeah.
Mention what? Absolutely.
Anyways, well, we are having a fundraiser for Auburn Youth and Family Services this Sunday at the Auburn High School track. And we're also holding a canned food drive. So if anyone finds yourself in the area Sunday morning, it's all going, a hundred percent of the proceeds go to Auburn Youth and Family Services, which relates to school committee, because we supplement a lot, they supplement a lot of what the school's trying to do and really try to compensate that.
Now, if someone can't make it to the event, how can they donate?
www.AYFS.org.
Okay, and if they want to stop by, can they stop by with a check or cash or?
Absolutely, check, cash, credit card. Or you can also come to visit Auburn Youth and Family Services at 21 Pheasant Court in Auburn.
So this is happening Sunday?
Yes, yes, it is. And all are welcome. We have lots of activities for the kids, free coffee, information booths about just health in general, so.
Great.
That's a good start.
So the kids run, it starts at 9:30, and the adults have a 10K and a 5K that starts at 10:00, so.
Thank you.
Very good.
It's a great event. And Auburn Youth and Families, we have a great partnership with them, so it's a great organization.
So we know what business is planned.
We are.
Good evening, everybody. The first item is regarding the McKinney-Vento and our update. The McKinney-Vento homeless reimbursement for the Auburn Public Schools is a, is eligible expenditures that is issued to the town annually by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. This reimbursement starts with the homeless transportation that's reported annually by us on our annual, on the year report that we submit. When we submit this each year, they collaboratively take all of the districts across Massachusetts, and they determine exactly what everybody is paid for homeless transportation across the board. They also, each year, they do a budget themselves, and they appropriate a certain allotted amount that they're going to use to reimburse the school districts for these related costs. What in essence happens is that they have to use a comparison purpose. Say, for example, they allow $1 million that they're going to allocate across the board to all the school districts. They work collaboratively with all of the reported end-year reports from all the districts. They look and see what's been reported. For instance, say, group-wise of the four hundred and so districts, there's about approximately $2.5 million reported. They look at it from a two-and-a-half perspective versus a $1 million, and they reallocate that million-dollar allotment equally across all the districts from what they actually expended. For us, historically, last year, there was a reimbursement that was designated by the state for fiscal year '12 that came out to be approximately 94.7 percent of what we spent. So as we had spent, per se, about $12,000 in 2012, we reimbursed just under $12,000. Last year, we spent just about $1,200. And so as we discussed earlier today, we're looking for our reimbursement of approximately $640 that has been sent back. This is one of those items that, again, just for informational purposes, when we report this year, it'll give us an idea of what our anticipated spendings are going to be for the 2014 fiscal year, and then we'll receive that reimbursement again come next June or July. Again, this is just for informational purposes. What we don't know yet, though, is how much the allocation's going to be, whether it'll stay consistent and go back to hypothetically a 50 percent of what we received in 2013, or maybe depending on what was reported by all the other states, or all the other districts, I mean, it might be a larger percentage. Again, so just for informational purposes. Also included, you'll see a list in front of you. This is our transfers that have been identified so far year-to-date. These are all within the same series, so this is more for informational purposes as well. There's no approval that's going to be technically necessary. But as you look through here, you'll see that a lot of this is identified based on our step-ups and our salary increases that were designated from last year's budget requests that took place back last October, November, to what we really had to confide with as far as bringing these new staff in for the current fiscal year. And again, if you have any questions on any of this information, I'll be more than happy to answer that. Also, in addition to the package that you have, you'll see a report, approximately twenty-four pages or so. This is identifying currently what we have from our last year budget that was approved for the district, what we've currently spent for each of the respective groups, and what each of these respective divisions. So if you look again, not to give them excessive details of it, but just, for instance, on page one, you can see administration and how much we were budgeted, how much we spent year-to-date, as well as each of the respective schools and so forth. Again, this is just for informational purposes, but if you have any questions on this report, by all means, I'll be more than happy to answer those.
Any questions? No?
Okay. In addition to those reports, fourth one, we have, obviously, besides the general fund and our allocated monies, we have other resources that we have access to. Predominantly would be our revolving accounts. And so what I provided to you here is a listing of the revolving accounts that we have within the district. For example, we have items such as the circuit breaker that gets allocated to us, as well as funds specifically like our Medicaid reimbursements and so forth that come through. Those are just a couple of examples that you'll see on here, in addition to athletic receipts, tuition receipts that come through. The two maybe that might be of the most concerning numbers, if you're looking at them and kind of give you a little bit of an answer before the question comes up, is our school lunch program. Because that revolving account is used for all of our cafeteria staff, and because of the fact that we predominantly use sources of income over the course of the year to allow us to compensate the staff, allow for us to pay for the food service costs that we're incurring over the course of the year, we don't have a budget, per se, that we can start with, because those funds are coming in truly as a revolving account. So you'll see that there is a deficit number here, but that deficit is primarily because we have to encumber the salary of all of our staff. That's including our director, as well as all of the cafeteria workers that we have. Over the course of the year, you'll see, each month when I provide this type of a report to you, that this deficit will obviously be reduced for two items. One, because we receive money, but two, because of those encumbrances that we had had at the beginning of the year, has also been reduced. Okay? Are there any questions on the revolving accounts or our special revenue funds? I don't see any. Okay. In addition to those items there, one item, just to update you on, is that, obviously, with the start of the school year, we had some discussions previously regarding our buses and the busing transportation. We had a meeting last week, the busing company, which is J.A. Transportation, myself, as well as one of our other staff members in the central office. We went through a lot of the questions that were coming up regarding students being picked up, pickup times, drop-off times, those that wanted to have, per se, new bus stops versus those that we had already strategically created to make it much more reasonable for all the students to be able to get on the bus and get dropped off on time. We still have had a couple of drop-off issues, per se, as far as buses arriving a little bit later than the bell rings run. We made some additional changes this evening that we're going to try to hopefully implement tomorrow and on Friday to kind of test to see how that's going to really come out. Hopefully, the busing changes, including moving some of the students on to different buses, to allow for a little bit more efficient bus runs to take place, will pretty much accommodate the two issues or three issues that we currently have. Unfortunately, the high school, there's really no issues at all, because it's the first bus stop and the first pickup and drop-off location, so all those are very first bus stop and the first pickup and drop-off location, so all those are very good. The middle school, again, no issues. It's predominantly more towards the elementary schools. Um, but again, at this point in time, it's, again, it's two buses specifically, but with some of those changes with reassignment of the bus stops, that should hopefully alleviate those issues that we have as well, and we should be hopefully on a better parameter for us to look forward to. And we will be working, because obviously another issue is that our contractor transportation ends this year, so we'll be discussing that and bringing that up shortly as well. Probably within the next month, we'll be trying to uh set some goals and uh set some earmarks towards our busing routes for next year.
How serious were were the issues? I mean, anytime someone's child is involved, it's serious, but I mean, were the parents irate, or were we able to?
I think the biggest issue was um the, a handful of the bus, or a handful of parents respectfully wanted to have uh pickup locations directly at their homes. Um, obviously with, in an overview, you know, when we have, you know, hundreds of students that are being picked up, we can't provide the resource of stopping at everybody's house. Unfortunately, if we did, the students and the buses would never get to school. So what we try to do is we try to accommodate the most realistic based on locations of the buses. For instance, if we have a pickup on Route Twelve or on Route Twenty, we can't really make them walk up and down those types of atmospheres too frequently, because there's such a risk involved with that. So we tried to come into a a good overview as far as really the the high-risk needs, implementing those stops initially to to kind of create the overview of where our busing routes are going to be. And then by looking at the requests that came up after the fact, specifically if we had a, for instance, a fifth grader last year in elementary school that was at a specific stop, we converted those to being a bus stop for the middle school buses. And so there was a nice congr- uh nice progression from where they were picked up. After that was done, obviously, we still had a handful of additional students, a lot more kindergarteners that came in that could have maybe needed additional stops on those various routes that, of a high risk. Um, other students that might have moved up to the high school and so forth. Again, the high school, middle school is pretty much all set. It's more predominantly the uh the elementary school. But by modifying the actual pickup and drop-off locations per the buses, we're hoping that that's going to be able to resolve a lot more of the issues that we had. And being able to make, uh, we've had currently, uh, this is going to be the fourth transportation meeting specifically on busing routes and pickups. So hopefully, once we wrap up tomorrow morning, we'll be able to have, hopefully, everything uh cleaned up and wrapped up across the board. And we have been trying to contact, um, we've been collecting phone calls pretty much on a weekly basis, as we've gathered them, overseen them, but we purposely tried to make sure that anybody that's called in, we've told that, you know, we are going to be having a transportation meeting, we'll call you all back respectfully once we have that meeting, because to call back an individual, to tell them that, you know, we're going to be meeting next week, so you have to hold out. You know, instead, we kind of told them when they called in, you know, we're in the review, we're going to be evaluating, and, you know, and uh for the most part, Mr. Barber or myself will be getting back to you as soon as we have our respective meetings each week. So that's our goal. And again, even today, I had a handful of calls. We were able to make the, to resolve a handful of issues that were were on the board.
I would say that this year, uh our bus route has been great. They've been um arriving in a timely fashion, in the morning and the afternoon, everything on the bus has been great. So I would encourage anyone, if they're if they're having that same experience, feel free to share any positive comments with us. Mr. Page?
Yes, I'll give you a positive.
All right.
Um, a couple days prior to school opening, there was a parent that called me regarding that their uh pickup was not on the list. It stopped maybe a quarter of a mile down the road to where this child had left. And it's up, they've always gone down there prior to that, so, but I had talked to the superintendent, and within two days, everything was cleared up, and the start of school, that kid was on that bus. And I think it was, I want to thank superintendent and the parents would like to say, um, thank the superintendent, which she knows who they were. And that's what you call good work and quick work, and everything worked out well.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Barber?
Yeah, I think um one thing that's overlooked a lot is the transfer bus that goes from Packer Chalk to Mary D, and is there one that goes from JB to Brenna?
Yes.
A lot of parents don't know about that, and that is a huge asset. So I think especially next year, we really should advertise that that is an option. Um, and it would change a lot of the routes in the afternoon, for sure, because a lot of the parents are doing parent pickup for the little kids, and they're, now, then they can wait for the transfer bus to drop their other child off.
And one of the things to think about next year is that because we will be taking two of the elementary schools and merging them into one location, and then obviously reassigning one of the other schools, there is going to be a change, per se, of of what bus a lot of the students are on, whether it's the high school and middle school, for the most part, they're not going to change too much. It's going to be a matter of the middle school just changing the drop-off location in the end. But when it comes to the elementary school, because we are going to be physically moving three out of four of them, it's going to be a matter of probably, in essence, we're going to be sitting there and rerouting almost the entire elementary school bus routes, and then compiling that from the standpoint of what's going to be the most efficient for the number of buses that we have, and allowing, you know, as as efficient of a pickup and drop-off timeframe and parameter that we can really put in place for them, to allow for there to be no risk and no concern regarding when the student's picked up versus when the student is being dropped off and delivered.
Excellent.
It's going to be a big challenge.
That's why the goal is to start that early, rather than waiting towards the end of the year. We'll be, again, beginning that pretty much next month, to be able to start doing that in place.
I think those transfer buses will be a huge asset to the whole process, because I'll have a kid at PAC and at Swanson Road, and I can pick up my child at PAC and wait for my other one to get delivered, so. It saves a lot of running around. So it's something to, I think, push for next year, definitely.
Okay, great. Thank you for the reports, Mr. Barber. Well done. We now move on to policies.
So the first two policies were ones that there were updates made by the Mass Association of School Committees, um, the two being student call-up and student complaints and grievances. So it is my recommendation, I review through these, and they are, I am in agreement with them in the protocols that we follow, so I would recommend that you approve those as updated.
I would entertain a motion to approve the updated policies as recommended by Dr. Brunel and MASC.
Make a motion to approve the updated policies as recommended by Dr. Brunel and MASC.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next one, we've had this policy in place, but a team uh met this past late spring and early summer to include our trainer, the director of physical education, health and athletics, as well as school nurse representatives. So this policy, it does not substantively change this at all, but instead what it does is it addresses and actually inserts the actual policy, um, the actual tests or screenings that we use. So it is my recommendation, it's still in full compliance with the law around this, so it is my recommendation that you approve this update.
I would entertain a motion to approve this update.
I'll make the motion to approve the update.
Do I have a second? Any questions, comments, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
And?
We do need a brief executive session to put, I didn't put it out there, but I'll read it, um, per MGL, Chapter Thirty, Section Twenty-One, A-three, to discuss tre- strategy with regard to potential litigation.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Do a roll call vote, Mrs. Harrington?
Yes, hi.
Ms. Sutton?
Hi.
Mrs. Holloway?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Scobie?
Yes. Do I entertain a motion to adjourn?
I think we will return, we'll adjourn, yes, so we'll return. Um, you, we won't return to open session, so you get adjourned after executive session.